Okay, good evening. Welcome to Active Claremont. Our regular monthly Thursday meeting, but this one's special because we have the pleasure, privilege, honor of having the candidates for the upcoming city council election join us for a forum, not a debate. You've seen those. No, we're having a forum tonight. Each candidate is going to be given the opportunity, it's time to express their views, their platform, their opinions, and what they're going to do for us, should they be elected or... Anyway, I'm Russ Wagner. I'm the president of Active Claremont currently. And I just, like I said, wanted to welcome you all. Thank you all for coming. We got a full house practically. That's awesome. And if you kick the meeting off properly, we always do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if I could ask everybody to stand just a moment? All right. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, what a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, awesome. Almost in line. All right. So the forum, as we have had in the past, will consist of a couple of minutes for each candidate to make their opening statements. We have a number of questions to start with. We have index cards and brand-new pens in the back to use to fill up whatever questions you might like to ask, and we will. Each candidate will be given a minute to answer the question.
And have fun, everyone.
Have fun, ask a lot of questions. To my left, we have Rachel L. Forster. She is going for the seat in District 1. Kingaro Onami is going for the seat in District 5, correct? Cory Kaleke, the incumbent in District 1, and Sal Medea, the incumbent in District 5. So then what we'll do is we'll start at the very left, starting with Rachel, and moving to the right. We'll have a two-minute opening statement. Thank you. And please begin.
Thank you so much. I'd first like to thank Active Claremont for holding this forum. I believe strongly in our democracy, and the more information people can get, the better that we are in making these choices. I'm running to represent Claremont's first district for city council. I am a person that lives in Claremont, works in Claremont, and raises my family in Claremont and grew up in Claremont. There's literally no corner of the city that I have not experienced, either in my life or through the lives of those that I work with. I am running because I feel there is something missing in our current council. I am here to fill in that spot. I care deeply about the things that make Claremont livable and the things that make Claremont what it is. I'm here to support livability in forms of affordable housing, lovely parks, safe sidewalks and streets so that everybody can get where they need to, and that we are building a Claremont that works for not just today and not just yesterday, but that a Claremont for tomorrow and for tomorrow's needs. I look forward to all of the questions that I'm going to get tonight, and thank you so much.
Okay, nicely done. Mr. Onami.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Please vote for yourself and your family, especially for children's future life. I'm working for children's future. That's why I'm running. Yesterday, I talked to a city manager. Program is political education program plan. I talked to him, and this is a city council meeting issue, so take long time. And he told me we have to talk to a school district, too. That's why I'm asking all of you, if you have a time, go to the city council meeting room with your friend, with your child, and you do make a political education for your kids. That's most important is education. That's why I'm running. Thank you.
May I stand?
Well, distinguished members of Active Claremont and community members, good evening. I want to also begin with a thank you. Thank you so much also for Active Claremont always doing our annual candidate forums here to make sure that our voters are informed. Thank you to all of you for being here to assure that you are informed voters in the upcoming election. But most of all, thank you to everyone in Claremont for the great privilege of having had this opportunity to serve you for so many years on your city council. I grew up here. As a matter of fact, this very year, I'm celebrating 50 years. Our family moved here to Claremont in February of 1974. And so I've been here 50 years. I went to the United Church of Christ preschool, Foothill Country Day School, the Webb Schools. I went to Loyola Marymount University in Los Angeles, where I received my degree in business administration. As your council member, I have the great honor of serving on many regional boards, which is also very important in terms of making sure we have connections and we're working on things that impact our community regionally. So I serve you on the Foothill Transit Board, on the Executive Board, I'm a past chair. I serve you on the County of Los Angeles Library Commission, the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District. I'm a former president of that organization. I'm chair this year of the Pomona Valley Transit Authority, and I also serve on the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, the JPA that procures energy and sells it in competing with Edison to try to make sure that Edison remains competitive. So I have that great opportunity in serving you in those capacities. I believe the important issues in this election, why I'm running, is quality of life, and of course, local control, I think, is very, very important. And we'll get more into those issues as the forum moves on. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I will defer my time to our next presenter. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I too want to say thank you for Active Claremont for the invitation, and thank you all for spending time out of your day, your busy schedules, to come out here and hear from the candidates in front of you here. My platform, I guess, if you would, hasn't changed from the first time that I ran for office. I believe in four core principles. Number one, economic development. I think it's important that we bring and attract successful businesses that can be in town that will ultimately create tax revenue, which will allow us to have the things that we really need within our community, whether it be housing, streets, parks, things of that nature. But we need a good base of economic development opportunities within our city. Second is fiscal responsibility. As a business owner, I find that fiscal responsibility is something many people talk about, but spreadsheets and budgets are not something that people speak of. So I take that to my day-to-day activity of making sure that when we look at our budgets, when we look at how we're spending and how we're participating in government, that we look at it through the lens of, this is not my money, it's everyone's money, and what is the best, most responsible way to act on those dollars? Thirdly is public safety. I've said from day one, public safety is a universal right for every community, whether you're in Claremont, South Claremont, Center, or the North. And over the last three years, four years, I've had the opportunity to work closely with our regional partners to really affect change in South Claremont, where we had a number of issues specifically relating to sex workers, human trafficking, things of that nature. But public safety is definitely something we need to be concerned of. And lastly, public engagement. Living in South Claremont, as you all may know, there's a lot of folks in South Claremont that might not necessarily be engaged with public activity. My goal is to meet people where they are, not expect them to come to us, and I look forward to the opportunity to do those four things going forward in the future.
The subject is affordable housing. Claremont has seen some rising home prices, making it harder for many residents to afford housing. What specific steps would you take to address housing affordability and ensure there are options for all income levels?
Yesterday, I go to the city, and the city plan, I heard it, and lots of living building and lots of business building coming up shortly. So I'm very good. I'm feeling very comfortable. But we have to thinking about public safety. That's first. Down south on the town, we have a coming three storage apartment coming. And can you imagine up three floor to look down in the backyard, can see go through inside the house, too? So I think that to build, yes, but we have to protect something to their privacy. Thank you.
In my time on council, of course, one of the early initiatives we've supported was the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that we introduced back in 2006. And that has allowed assurance that new development that is six units or more, 15% of those units are intended to be affordable. In the past, a lot of that housing was moderate-income housing. It did allow us to exceed our moderate-income housing numbers, but nonetheless, we did a lot with that. A project I was also very proud that came about around that time that I worked on with my former colleague Sam Pedrosa, of course, was the Courier Place development, which was a very successful project, all levels of housing. And we included seniors and families in that development. I think it's been a very positive development. In my time on council, we've approved over 1,000 units of housing of various levels. And that's an important point. I've been involved in decisions that have built housing, and it's unfortunate that in spite of that, the state is choosing to take away a lot of our local authority. I think we've done very well, having citizen participation, and Courier Place was an example of that. Thank you.
Having only served on council for the last four years, I think I, for some reason, I have the luxury of being able to say that I've been active in participating in some of the housing that has come up, that has been built over the last few years. And I have, but I actually took my hat off to the colleagues that came before me that have done the heavy lifting. What I think I bring is the opportunity to hold those conversations and continue to have that dialogue, both locally with local residents with regards to the needs that the city of Claremont wants, but also have that conversation with our regional and state partners with regards to the demands and expectations that the state is bringing on us. So for me, I'm always bringing an open eye, excuse me, an open mind to the table where we can participate with dialogue and making sure that what we bring in that is coming to Claremont fits what Claremont is looking to achieve in terms of the livability that we've called home for a number of years.
One minute to talk about affordable housing is simply not enough. We have a housing crisis in California. We have a housing crisis across the country, and that comes from 60 years of underdevelopment. In the state of California, we have added jobs, we have added population, we have not added the housing that is needed for those people that are building our economy. The housing crisis is so complicated that there is not a single type of housing or a single way to approach it. We need to approach it from every angle in every way. That means building market-rate housing that is denser and more environmentally sound. That means building subsidized affordable housing. That means building mixed-use property. We need all of those things. The housing crisis is not an ambiguous and amorphous thing out there. It is something that is experienced by Claremont residents, including people like my family, who are one of the over 30% of people in Claremont that are rent-burdened. If there are so many people in Claremont that if their rent is increased, they will not find a place to live here, and we are losing those people from our community. Having affordable housing for all? We're going to talk more about this.
Thank you, thank you. We're going to take an audience question. What do you think are the top two social issues in Claremont? We'll start with Cory.
I know one that's on the top of a lot of our residents' heads, of course, is the situation with our unhoused in the community. And it's unfortunate because, you know, prior to the pandemic, we had a great program in town in CHAP. And unfortunately, CHAP didn't live through COVID. And, you know, we have proposals now for permanent supportive housing, but those developments don't necessarily guarantee that even our unhoused here in the community are going to get those services, where CHAP allowed us to actually serve those individuals. So I know that's probably the biggest one. You know, the other thing, I guess at this point I can just say, too, is, you know, our youth and senior programs are very important to people in this town. And so also making sure that we're maintaining those types of services for our residents, and to the extent that there are opportunities to provide other services, that we need to do that. I think it's wonderful, too, that we've done a lot of programming now, even for people with, for individuals and families with special needs. And we have a great program, of course, coming up this Friday. I want to acknowledge my colleague Jed Leano. I know worked very hard on that, but really appreciate his efforts on that, and I support it. Thank you.
There's a number of social issues that I think that we can all address, but first and foremost, it is the unhoused. I think Claremont has a big heart. Claremont has a giving soul, and we want to help as much and as often as we can. It's just, I think, some of the conversations that are had is how and where, and how does Claremont, how do we as residents play a role in how we support our unhoused, whether they be within our city limits or regionally, those that make their way into Claremont? Secondly, I would say the big concern that I always have is people talk about engaging youth, and I think that more so than ever before right now, engaging our youth in civic activity, whether it be on a friendly matter or whether it be on a more complex matter, is very important. And when I say youth, I really think more elementary and middle school. As a former high school teacher, I think sometimes at the high school level, I'm not going to say it's too late, but I think the best thing we could do is really intervene in the youth lives of our children and show them that as elected officials, that we are approachable, that we are human, that we're just like everyone else, and you, too, have the opportunity to affect change. All it takes is that role model that you can follow and see somebody that looks like me, sounds like me, and makes their way through the process. I think that's what I look forward to doing.
I'd like to say thank you for this question. I'm not exactly sure what issues that we deal with in a city that are not social issues. Every single thing that we do as a city is there to serve the people of the community. Government is, in its essence, a service provider. I myself am a service provider in my work, and I think about all of the aspects of the way that my business affects the people that I'm serving, and that's my approach to what I will do on the city council. All of the aspects of people's lives in Claremont being whether that is what their kids are doing in school, how they're getting there, how people are finding housing, how people are running their businesses, and the ways that they, the things they need. These are all social issues, and you have to look at it as such. Nothing is just purely bureaucratic. Everything has a person behind it in government. So I'd say every single issue is an important social issue. I'd echo some of my people here on the dais when they say, talking about the unhoused population and serving them is really important. And the most important way that we do that is by providing housing and services to those people.
I think we need more house apartment for living young people. And I'm thinking it's younger people not much money, so we have to as much as law keeping. And I'm also education. Political education is very important because young people not much interested in politics. So I, those people, aim to the politics. And in the future, those young people more bold, I'm happy. Thank you.
And by the way, Rachel, you're doing a great job. That's why I assist. Very cool. All right. Next question. Sustainability and environmental initiatives. That's the topic. Claremont is known for its commitment to sustainability. What are your plans for further, to further improve environmental initiatives in the city, especially around water conservation, renewable energy, and reducing carbon emissions?
If I understand the question correctly, we're referring to environmental sustainability aspects of life. And I'm proud to say that serving over the last four years on council, we've actually done a number of, approved a number of initiatives to really create a sustainable Claremont. When it comes to our fleet vehicle, our motor vehicles, our energy sources, things that we are doing that are within our control as far as city vehicles and city facilities, things of that nature. We also are very prideful of our trees within the city of Claremont. We are the city of trees and PhD, but for every tree that comes out of the ground, we look for, how do we plant two more trees out and about to make sure that we have sustainability? We have sustainability in our green space. Of course, we are very active in looking at the green space to the north of us. I am very proud to say that El Barrio Park was redone during the last four years, and if you've had a chance to look at that, and how that has been reconverted into an incredibly sustainable, walkable environment. We recently approved and we've extended the GoSGV bike opportunities, who are allowing folks to rent bikes that are subsidized by the city to help get vehicles off of the road, to again, create less carbon footprint that we can say is our responsibility.
The greatest, the greatest threat to our environment here in Southern California is vehicle miles traveled. That's how far it takes people to get from where they live to where they need to go. We reduce that immediately by housing people where they need to, where they need to work, right? If people are priced out of Claremont and still want to have jobs and businesses here, now they're needing to drive from somewhere further. The very best thing we can do for the environment is to create environmentally sound housing that puts the workforce near where they live. New housing and environmentally sound housing is better for the, for water usage. Single-family homes on large properties are lovely and wonderful, and the amount of water they use per capita is way greater than the amount of water per capita in moderate-density housing. We can build more of that. We've got lots of beautiful single-family homes. We're missing the missing middle of housing there. The other is making sure that our infrastructure matches our goals. So if we want people to be out of their cars, we need to make sure that they feel safe on the sidewalk, so they feel safe riding a bike, that they feel safe getting around. This is both an equity and an environmental issue, and it's also an issue of accessibility.
I think we need more housing, but we have to equally, public safety and utility problem. Do you remember, we have a power shortage, water shortage? And yesterday meeting, I'm asking city workers planning. They say water company say yes, and power company, they say yes, enough, but we have to looking because of so many building coming up very soon. You can check by city. They have a plan. Thank you.
Something very important with regards to sustainability. A lot of people represent to us, you know, that we all need to play by the rules and be environmentally sensitive, but then some of the very people talking about it don't live it. And I do try to be an example to others to encourage them to adopt the same practices. Before I was on council, I bought the first hybrid vehicle, the Honda Insight, back in 2000. I continue to have a hybrid. I have a plug-in hybrid now. I've moved up to the plug-in hybrid, but I had that Insight for 18 years. I have solar on my house. I've added battery backup. Another thing I'm very proud of that some people are aware of and others may not be, the yard signs you see around the community, those yard signs are upwards 12 years old. I've always pulled in my signs out of respect to my Claremont residents to not leave trash around the community, put them in storage, and then we clean them up and put them back out in the community. So all those signs are recycled. I don't keep going back and throwing things in the trash and then buying new ones. So that's also a very important part of this, is we do need to preach these points to folks, but we also need to live them in our lives. And I try to do that in addition to encouraging people to live sustainable lifestyles. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one from the audience. It's dangerous to be a pedestrian in Claremont. If you were elected or re-elected, what ideas do you have to make it safer to be a pedestrian in Claremont?
Does that back to me? I understand the needs of safety around being a pedestrian because we are a one-car family, and frequently being on my feet or on a bike is how we get around, and it's how my kids get to school. We have witnessed the danger that can exist when you are out there on the road. We can just ask anybody who's been around El Roble in the morning or at school, and you at school drop-off, and it is very scary. On city council, I will bring a couple of things to it. One, the actual lived experiences of what it is like to be a pedestrian and a biker and to have that be the only mode of transportation that you have tells you what you need. We have to bring back more of the bus routes that have been lost over the years so that people can get that last mile, so they can get to the trains that are coming. We need to make sure that we don't just have a complete street here or a complete street there, that we have streets that connect so that anywhere you want to go to the city, you feel like there is a safe place, a safe route for you to get from A to Z. We handle and make things safer for our kids and around our schools when we get people out of cars, but we can't get people out of cars if there isn't a safe place for them to be.
I saw lots of people not stop. School bus sign, stop, means both way have to stop. So please keep stop and show the children. If you are inside the children driving and the school stop coming, no stop, go through, that's bad education. So we have to do it. We adults have to do it, showing to the children right way. Thank you very much.
Some of you know the projects we've done in town. Of course, Foothill Boulevard and Town Avenue is wrapping up, and those are Complete Streets Project, which part of the objective is to consider pedestrians as well as bicycle traffic. And of course, it's important because we have opportunities when we apply those principles to get grant money to be able to do those projects. Sinage is probably another way, education, somebody pointed out to me, you know, we could use some more education even on the Thompson Creek Trail because sometimes the bicyclists and the pedestrians aren't interacting well. So thoughts like, you know, pedestrians should only wear one earphone so that they're aware of their surroundings. Those are all things that, you know, we need to do to educate. I'm glad transportation came up because the challenge there, we, I want to also say from a sustainability standpoint, we've pushed on Foothill Transit to go to hydrogen electric buses, and I've been a big part, a big pusher of that. My colleagues will speak to that on that board. The challenge with transit, though, also, is it doesn't, you know, even changing bus lines, it doesn't go to enough places, and that's one thing you hear from people. It doesn't get them where they need to go, and safety right now is a big concern, and we're hearing about that. Fortunately, Metro is, you know, implementing their own police force. We have great, you know, we have a great security head in Foothill Transit, but that's all, it all kind of works together to get people to use public transit. Thank you.
When we talk about street safety, my big concern is the ancillary entry points to the city of Claremont. When you're making your way through the village, or when you're making it through the small neighborhoods, for the most part, it appears to be safe whether you're walking or you're biking. However, if you make your way down to American, the further southern part of Claremont, and you try to ride your bike to the village, that becomes nearly an impossible feat. Walking up Indian Hill through the I-10 underpath, that alone is dangerous. So one of the things that I've been working on is working with our regional partners to address the disconnect between the absolute southern part of Claremont and make it connect to the village, to allow people to ride their bike safely, walk to the village. Right now, we have a tunnel that makes its way under the freeway that's a walkable tunnel only, but even that is not even ADA approved. So there's a lot of deficiencies that we have to address in the southern part of Claremont. On Town, we're working on. Arrow Highway, we're working on. College, Claremont Boulevard, we're working on. So there are areas in the ancillary points that I think that we need to address. And then to touch on slightly is policing. Our police officers are the first line of defense, and when a lot of visitors come into town, they're the ones that typically, I shouldn't say they, those of us that live in town, we do not speed. We do not want to get a ticket in our own town, but sometimes our visitors don't apply the same rules.
Once again, good job. Thank you. Are there more audience questions? If so, don't be shy. Okay, good. Don't be shy. Questions, all right? This election is nominally nonpartisan. Should it be and why? Or why not, right?
There you are.
Sorry, I don't understand the question.
He doesn't understand.
By the election being nonpartisan, that means that the election...
Nonpartisan?
Nonpartisan means neither Republican or Democrat.
Neither Republican nor Democrat.
Oh, I see.
Okay. Agree?
Yes.
Okay. Good enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Please.
Okay. United States election is very funny because we have to register the vote first. No register can vote. No register can vote. And when it's say, public, Republican and Democratic, you have to choose. Now it's three party, but we have to choose first one of these. No register cannot. I'm doing like 25 years ago, I choose Democratic. So each vote coming county booklet, that my choice is a choice minority first. Second, Democratic people choose. That's it.
California is among few states where it was always considered anything from county government on down was nonpartisan. Like New York, that's not the case. They list the parties of the people that are running. And I think as people are seeing what's going on in our society right now, people are frustrated as heck about parties. You know, within those parties, people, certain people have power, and even if other members of the party don't agree, they get bullied into taking positions they don't necessarily agree with. So I value being on the local level. And one thing I'm very proud of, if you go around to the houses in the community, it's clear I've got broad-based support. Not that I'm supporting any of the candidates for president at this point in time, but I've got signs in some yards with Paris. I've got signs in some yards with Trump, signs in yards with different candidates for Assembly and Senate. I'm very proud of the fact that I've got that kind of crossover support, and I wouldn't have the ability to serve on this council if it weren't for that. I value that. I think I demonstrate that in the way I work with my other colleagues. We have different ideologies and philosophies, but we're always respectful of each other. And we can go toe-to-toe, particularly my colleague Jennifer Stark and I can go toe-toe, but afterwards, it's always touching because she'll come up to me a lot of times and give me a hug and say, you know, I hate when we argue, and we move on to the next issue. So I think it's important, the nonpartisanship.
Thank you. I appreciate the question because in my view, while I understand why people want to know which side of the fence you sit on, on Democrat or Republican, unfortunately, sometimes those conversations create a bigger divide than they do connect people. And especially in a local city as small as ours, I love the fact that we have a nonpartisan election because at the end of the day, the party that's most important to the city of Claremont is the city of Claremont. That's what we really believe in in terms of this is local, this is our town, this is our community. On a national scale, what you believe in, whether it be one party or the other, the beauty of that is we have the elections in which you make your way in and you have a privacy, an opportunity to vote without having somebody maybe threatening or looking over your shoulder and saying, well, you're this, you're that, you're going to vote this, you're going to vote that. We have free will. The best thing about our country is that we have the right to vote the way we choose to vote. And locally, I think the most important thing to do is that we vote for the folks that we think will represent our city in the best fashion possible for the next four years.
I agree with my colleagues up here 100%. This is not a partisan race because our Claremont issues are not partisan issues. Right? You can find a Democrat out there in Claremont, you can find 10 of them, and they all have different opinions on what we should do around housing and parks and the streets. The partisan politics don't belong in our city because that's not how a city like this works. We need to all come together and talk about things based off of issues and issues. I come from a family where we have lots of different political ideologies. I think every one of my siblings and both of my parents all would see themselves a little bit different when it comes to politics. And yet, when it comes to city things, we come together because we have the same set of values on how a city should run, and that's what is at the core of this election. So I'm 100% that this should remain, and it's good that it is a nonpartisan race.
Economic development. Claremont has a unique small-town charm, but it's also important to foster economic growth. What would be your approach to supporting local businesses and encouraging sustainable economic development while preserving the character of the city?
Well, again, as somebody who's already elected to office, I have a record that is there, whether people agree with it or not, but I am grateful because we've done a lot of great things, I believe, in this town with economic development. You know, when I first came on council, our auto center was kind of going down. Toyota was okay, but some of other dealers went away. Now we've got a strong, thriving Mazda dealership. You know, other businesses that have come to town since I've been here is Super King. We brought in Norms. Sandin Wong moved to a new location. We have Trader Joe's. Of course, even the Doubletree, the new Doubletree was still the Griswolds Hotel when I first came in. So these are all things that are important. It's a challenge though, people need to understand also, it's important for people to make sure they're supporting our local businesses. That's the big thing. People get upset when businesses are saying they're going to close their door, and then they blame the council and say, oh, you guys are doing something wrong. But, you know, as we see with like Lemley and other businesses, if you want them to stay here, it's not just about the council bringing them here, you have to support them. So get your Lemley card, you know, go out to our restaurants, go, you know, buy your car. I bought, we bought two cars, a Dodge this last year, a Ram, and I traded in for a Toyota at the Claremont Toyota. Support Claremont businesses. That's the most important part.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I think I like this one. I look at Claremont business as kind of a pyramid of activity, and at the bottom of the pyramid is your local businesses, your mom and pops, where you walk into a business and you know the names, you know the people, you know the families, and we love supporting those, but we also need those mid-tiers, those Chicos, those Eureka's, those businesses that are family-ish owned but have the sustainability to pay the bills, pay the rents, attract customers, attract people from a regional base. But then we also need those few businesses such as the Claremont Toyotas, the Mazda, the Doubletree, the corporate businesses that as much as Claremont says we don't want corporate in town, we don't want corporate in town, those corporate businesses have a reputation to stay in business for the long haul and continue to create that tax revenue, continue to create that energy and bring different businesses. As a business owner, I have the opportunity to be able to have great relationships with a number of these strong businesses in town that are truly the backbone of that tax revenue opportunity, the management at Claremont Toyota, Mazda, Claremont Dodge, Norms, a number of the restaurants in town. And the question to us is always, are we a business-friendly city? And my answer to them is it is. It is. Just listen, participate, make your way through. And as a business owner, I again, go out and meet the businesses on their terms to say, how can city help you?
I run my business here in Claremont. I've worked for a number of small businesses here in town, and I've seen some of the challenges that face our small businesses. There's not a ton that a city council can do as far as making a business work, right? But we can create environments where businesses can thrive. Think a really good example is that the parking in the village is a problem, and I don't know that anybody in Claremont feels differently about it. We do all feel differently about how to address it, but doing nothing on this parking for so many years is a problem. We see these businesses that are kind of like drop-in businesses where you want to just go in and drop off your dry cleaning or pick up your prescription. Those are getting harder and harder if you have to park really far away because people that are working there are parked in those spots. We need parking management that makes it so people can go and do that and that also we can have all of this great, it's great that we don't have parking. That shows that we have good businesses, but we need to make sure that we're supporting that and that we're a city for more than just restaurants. Also, we saw during COVID that there was a lot of, a challenge for a lot of businesses in finding people to hire and in staffing their businesses. And again, if you have minimum wage jobs and people cannot afford to live in this community, they might find a job somewhere else, and that hurts our businesses as well.
My idea is focus to workers, and I make one section to city, and we announcement to what kind of job in Claremont we have to announcement. And on future, small children, I have a unique education, dream education. And people, small student, thinking about a dream, write it down, and teacher has nothing to tell. And those children thinking, how can I be, make my dream? It's like a otani. Otani is six salary, many write it down and do write it. So, and we advise those kind of job need a special license, like thing. So we need announcement to a work spot in Claremont to everybody. Thank you.
One more from the audience. I'll do my best to read this properly. What do you want changed in Claremont? For instance, what it looks like? Please be specific, it says about progress, projects, activities, and how would you fund all of these?
When we look at Claremont across the board, there's a number of folks that love what Claremont looks like, would appreciate the aesthetic of what it is, understanding that that has to change, whether it be development, commercial or residential. In my opinion is as long as we're developing with that in mind, that we want to keep things that look like Claremont, like a small town. Folks move to Claremont because they don't want to live in a large city that has massive population. It's a small town, it has small-town charms. If there's something specifically that I am working on and am very passionate about is making the southern part of Claremont look like the rest of Claremont. Most people that don't exit off the 10 freeway don't understand what I'm referring to, but I ask people on a regular basis, spend the next 30 days exiting the 10 freeway, and then tell me if it looks like the 210 freeway off-ramp. So what I'm looking forward to is being able to create the infrastructure that we can create that connectivity again between, Claremont does not stop at the 10 freeway. People, a lot of people think they do. It goes down to American. We claim our shopping centers, we claim our car dealerships because there's great tax revenue, but we need to claim all of our city. There's no green space in the southern, southern part of Claremont. That needs to change. We need to create connectivity in the south. So I'd like to see infrastructure in that part of the city change.
Could you repeat the question?
What do you want changed in Claremont? And for instance, what it looks like? And can you be specific about these changes? For instance, talk about programs, projects, activities, et cetera, and how do you fund all of these?
Excellent. I would say first and foremost, I want there to be working-class neighborhoods in Claremont. My parents bought a home at 272 Oak Park Drive in 1975. At the time, that street had people that were working-class, single mothers, retirees. That neighborhood is no longer a working-class neighborhood because nobody can afford to live there. Claremont is changing out from under us because we're not addressing the lack of housing. So we talk a lot, when you talk about development, we talk about neighborhood character. When I hear neighborhood character, I think about the people that make the character of the neighborhood, not the shape and size of buildings. So I want a Claremont that is the Claremont that I remember, that has a diversity of people of all different socioeconomic statuses, of all different walks of life. Funding this, it's housing. This is a housing issue. I know I seem like a one-topic person, but that is because housing affects the way we live, it affects our transportation, it affects our businesses, it affects everything. So funding it is the way that we do all things with housing, which is beg, borrow, and steal.
Last Saturday, my community is neighborhood paring. Me and Sal go to the party, and I have very lucky to living that space. So we have to communicate to neighborhood. That's number one. And that's making it more big. That's a good idea, I think. Thank you.
The only thing certain in life, of course, is change, but to what level do you want that change? I've always been concerned about making sure we temper change, ensure that it's reasonable, that it comes with input from our community and it's balanced. You know, Sal actually brought up a great point because the reality is it's not about income level. People are attracted to Claremont because of the community that it is, because of the feel of the community for so many reasons. And so as that starts to change, people lose heart. And I can tell you, I know there are some folks here, even in the community, that have made sacrifices that are blue-collar workers that aren't necessarily well-to-do, but they made tough decisions to be able to live in this community. And they come to me very troubled when they start seeing these changes that change the feel and look of their neighborhoods. That's important to them. So we can't just disregard that. So again, you know, another thing too, I'm appreciative also. I've come from District One, but because I've been elected at large in many, in many elections, I care about this whole community. And Sal knows I've come to his argument also to make sure we're spreading our resources equally. And yes, I've been saying time and time again in council lately that we need to take care of Indian Hill all the way down to the 10 freeway. We need to take care of other neighbors as much as we've taken care of some of the northern neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right, let's do one more, then we'll go to closing statements. All right, who played Lovey in Leave It? How can we strengthen our schools and ensure long-term resiliency amid decreasing enrollment?
I've spent a lot of time on my campaign talking about the relationship between the school district and the city. I've got three kids in all three different levels of schools in Claremont, and I have seen since my oldest daughter started kindergarten in 2014, we have lost nearly 1,000 students in our school district. We went from 7,000 to just a little over 6,000. The school district functions really well within the facilities it has at about 7,000 people. Every time we lose a pupil, we lose school funding, and that funds programs that are all of the extracurriculars, all of the things that enrich, that make Claremont schools really important and really special. I've witnessed families with multiple kids come here, live here for a little bit, and then move on because there's not a place for them to make their home in Claremont once their family starts getting larger. We don't have places for, we don't have starter homes anymore. We don't have affordable housing for people that are raising their families. This is a cost to our community, it's a cost to the students that live here. On council, I will absolutely work and coordinate with the school district on our programs and our policies, and I will work to make sure that our school district stays as strong as it's always been.
I'm thinking about school, not much student, and I heard about it. It's outside of the city, comes to the Claremont school, over the city. And those people are using our budget. So I want in school, 100% child or Claremont city people. Because I need more housing, living, apartment, forever, and we have a coming soon, more. I'm just happy that way. Thank you.
I guess I probably should preface my remark by just making the point also, you know, we're not the school board, we have a school board that handles school issues, and then we have city council. That being said, I will not deny that this plays into the resident base that you have. The thing is declining enrollment has been a problem for some time in many of the communities up and down the foothills. And some of that too, I'm even hearing reports that one of the things is people are having fewer children. The Pope came out lately and said he was disappointed with people that chose to adopt pets as their children as opposed to having children. So that's one challenge. Another thing, and it's funny because Jeff Pammels here, and he talks about this a lot, about the housing stock that we have, that we need more single-flat housing to give seniors opportunities to move into smaller homes. Because one of the things that's keeping some seniors in their homes right now is Prop 13. That is an affordable housing item because then when property taxes don't go up, it allows seniors to stay in age and place. But if they have a smaller unit, that's one story to Jeff's point, that they could transition to, they might do that, and that would free it up for a family with children to move in, which we're starting to see more of as I've been walking around in North Claremont. I'm coming across a lot of homes now where there are newer, younger families moving in because people have either passed on or found other housing companies or smaller. Thank you.
Thank you. Enrollment in the state of California for students is down, and part of that is, as was stated earlier, that kids are having, people are having less and less children. I grew up in the city of Azusa, in which my elementary, middle school, and high school have since closed down. So I oftentimes just... So I oftentimes joke with Citrus and Laverne, so they got to be careful as well. I'm not having a good track record. But one of the things that we can do as council that's very, very important is have a great partnership with our school board, understanding that the school board is managing the schools, the city council is managing the city, but having that relationship with our school board members, having that relationship with our superintendent, with our principals, visiting those schools on a regular basis, and more important, creating youth activities, whether it be the waiting pools over the summer that we, we push to open on five days a week to have those kids and family activities, whether it's the Easter activities that we have at Memorial Park, this spectacular is coming up. But I think it's important as council that we budget activities for our kids and our families to go out and do things and have a community feel when they're out and about so that they take those back to the classroom as happier, healthier students and then become productive even else.
All right. As we come up on hour, I think it's fair, everybody's got to speak and I thank you for all of the, the audience questions, but I think right now what we should do is move to closing statements. So that, you know, to really put a cap on everything that's been said and give you a clear idea of what is to come. Okay?
That's not my got it, for sure.
Again, I do political education for kids. And each one of you, if you have child, go to the city hall, council meeting, and you show to the, you interested in politics and pay attention for politics. And children learn how to do it. Those people starting after 18 to vote. Vote is most important. And after vote, have to watch, checking, whatever we elected people, what's going on, we have to check. Vote is not finish. It's important, but after vote, we have to check the person, what we're going to do. And you show that children, and the children learn how to do it. And after learn, those kids forever to vote, I think. And I'm happy that way. Thank you very much.
Again, I'm going to preface my remarks with thank you. Thank you to Active Claremont. I'm very proud that I'm a founding member of this organization going back to 1994. This organization's still strong and doing great things for the community, so thank you to them. Thank you to all of you again for coming out today and participating and assuring that you know all your candidates and that you're in a position to make an informed decision. Thank you again to this community for the great privilege that you've given me. Whatever occurs November 5th, you have given me a great gift and I'm grateful for it and I never take that for granted and I would be honored to be able to continue working for you. I appreciate the question about non-partisanship because that's very important to me. I want to make a point that a political party wanted to put me on a slate mailer and encourage people to vote for me with their candidates. And I told them, I'm not going to do that. I've made a commitment that this is a nonpartisan race and I'm not connecting myself with any political parties. I also have made a commitment that I'm not taking contributions from anybody who's not a local resident here or a, or a small business owner. Edison approached me and I said, thank you, but I, I'm going to decline your, your contribution. It's all local. This is about the community, it's about the city of Claremont and, and that, that's who I'm accountable to and who I represent. I thank you for that opportunity. I, again, I, if you haven't had your question answered, which if candidates form, I know there's always questions that don't get answered. I hope you'll reach out to me. My website is on my yard signs prominently around town, CoreyKolikai.com. Please do reach out to me. I'm happy to pay you a personal visit or engage you on email or phone, whatever the case is, to, to make that happen. But again, I hope that once you've evaluated the candidates, that those of you in District One will decide to allow me to continue as your representative on your city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you again for, everyone, for inviting us all to speak this evening, for you to take the time. It's great to be here because having run four years ago in the midst of COVID, everything was via Zoom. So I did experience the butterflies that I had today coming in, so I appreciate that. But what I do want to say is that I'm proud to have served over the last four years and I feel to some degree that I was short-changed having that one year of Zoom where I had to learn how to do things via Zoom and that's not a really good learning curve. Year two and three, I was really able to hit the ground running and learn from my colleagues and learn from our regional partners. And year four, I feel as if I finally have got my stride. And people had asked me, they said, well, you were a one-and-done candidate. It's like I was. I'm not a one-and-done candidate because there's so many things that I got in the mixer right now that I really want to see to fruition. And the one thing that I am proud of, and I know it's confusing being in districts, but when you, when you drive through the city, you'll see my signs up and down throughout the city, across the entire city. And the reason I tell people, please take my sign, you live off of Padua, you live off of Baseline, you live off of American, because we on council have made a commitment to represent all of Claremont, not just our districts individually. So I know that is confusing, but having our signs throughout the entire city proves to people that, no, we don't take that lightly. I know I talk a lot about South Claremont, but that's because I feel that South Claremont has really been underrepresented for so long and a lot of things need to be fixed there. But I do care about our Wilderness Trail, I do care about the Padua Theater, Baseline, the connectivity, bike lanes on Baseline, things of that nature. There's a lot more than just the districts, but I am proud to be able to say that I've represented the city of Claremont proudly and fairly and I always listen to folks regardless of what side of the fence you sit on. And the one thing that I do enjoy, the question was asked to me four years ago, is like, what do you think of council and its group thing? I appreciate the fact that over the last four years, the council that I stand on is not a group thing council. We disagree regularly, but we hold our values and we hold them steadfast and we, we respect each other, but we also respect the individual opinions that they're saying and then we hold ourselves accountable as well. Thank you guys for allowing us to speak.
Thank you all for coming and spending your evening with us tonight. I'm ready to fill this role on day one. I'm dedicated to Claremont. I've served as the vice chair of the Community and Human Services Commission. I've served as the president of the Board of the League of Women Voters. I have served on PFAs and booster groups with, I was on the board of the Claremont Educational Foundation. There is, every corner of Claremont is a corner of Claremont that I understand and that I'm ready to serve. The Claremont that we have, that we live in, that we love, doesn't exist by accident. It exists because of the investments that were made by the generations of people that came before us. Right now, it is incumbent upon us to make the, make our own investments for the people that come next. I'm going to serve on council, thinking about the people that are coming after us and making sure that we are leaving a better world and a better Claremont for them than what we have and what we've found. Please, I hope that you will go to my website, rachelforclaremont.com. You can find out more about my policies and who I am. Much like my colleagues, you'll see, you will find my signs throughout Claremont because I am supported by people throughout this community. I work in District Five, my parents live in District Two, I go to, I live in District One, my kids go to school in others. There's not a corner of the city, that is not a corner of the city that I care about. I'm ready to serve on day one and I can't wait to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you all. I have a question for Randy Lopez. When is the Chamber of Commerce going to be hosting a similar affair?
Yes, we're hosting one on October, excuse me, September 26th.
September 26th?
Yes. That'll be over at the Doubletree at 1:00 and you can just go on the Chamber website and just register.
Okay. So if your questions didn't get answered here tonight, I would encourage you to join Randy over at the Doubletree. Next week, same time, same place, we are having a town hall meeting with Rachel Fiallo, the yellow.
Cheryl.
Who am I got on my mind? Cheryl Fiallo. She will be answering questions in a basically, a
Town hall.
Town hall setting. We've invited, we've invited each of the other candidates for the school boards and they've declined. But Cheryl thought that this is a key opportunity to answer your questions, so please come next week. Same room, same time, 7:00. At this point, I'd like to thank all of our candidates. Rachel, not Cheryl. Kengaro and Ami. Corey Kolikai. Don't want to cut anybody off.
And Sal Medina.